Early today, normally we start late, but I can start a few seconds early, I don't mind doing that. This is a meeting for October thirteenth. Seven P M. now, okay. I can bring the Dunbar and Barcelat meeting to order. We have all three selectmen present, the town administrator is present. Recording for the citizens of Dunbar is Mr. Leo Martel, thank you Leo. Those uploaded and the link can be found on the website. Gentlemen, we have some.
I'll make a motion to approve the September twenty ninth, twenty twenty two meeting minutes as amended.
I second.
Discussion, I just want to point out one thing, I saw they were written and the thing is, I thought they were well, but there was a section in there that discussed purchasing policy. And I just want to make a point of order to you gentlemen and to the public that we did follow the purchasing policy that was adopted tw- April twenty fourteen and amended on twenty fifteen at town meeting. The Board of Selectmen did follow an authorized procedure by this policy. However, at the last meeting, the recommendation of Mr. Robert Martel for additional bids to ensure taxpayers quote unquote get the best value was noted. And the I in the board has fully committed to work to ensure our future purchases follow this recommendation when appropriate. So that was a point of order was brought up to us and however, it was noted and we're going to try to, in the future, if it's applicable, we will follow that. Any other discussion on that, gentlemen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of September twenty ninth, two thousand twenty two, as written.
Actually, those were amended as well, right?
Just for the RSA.
Yes. Okay. Any discussion, gentlemen, on those? Well-written, as always, Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna, at this point, I'm gonna open up for public comment. No, I stand corrected, we have one more set of minutes to approve. This is, on September twenty eighth, Dunbar Board of Selectmen met at Dunbar and Town Library to review some of the donations by various members of the town, the benefactors. And it was public meeting held, as I said, September twenty eighth at nine P M.
A M.
A M., stand corrected, it was in, definitely in the morning, we needed the light in there. And I'm going to read these, it was a general discussion of the construction progress of the library project, it was followed by a discussion concerning donations from the Casianos. And the Casianos plan to donate stage lighting curtains, sound system, meeting room seating, handicap lift for stage, refinishing the floors, and possibly drywall installation. The meeting started at about nine A M. and it ended, adjourned about nine thirty five. Gentlemen, I make the motion to approve these minutes.
I'll second your motion.
And the only two selectmen with there were myself and Dave, Dave, Justin, you were not. Okay, all in favor? And again, that meeting was, we had some promises at a town meeting, we wanted to get some clarification of what what path we were going to follow and what other things we needed to make the project complete. That was a good meeting. Okay, now I'll open for public comment. Okay, I'll start with the back row. Yes, sir, state your name for the record.
Fred Mullin, Stock Lane. I just got an email this evening from Jackie Kennedy. Her husband Steve just passed away. Steve was our king in the fire department's nineteen eighty one Cinderella play. And Steve was also one of our selectmen, one of our great selectmen in the nineteen eighties. And I just want to let you know that he was, he just passed away.
Thank you, Fred. You're on the agenda, sir, second row. On the agenda. And sir, I think you're on the agenda too.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Okay, first thing on the business, I'd like to introduce Mr. David, Officer David Proff.
Thank you.
Sheriff David Proff.
David's fine, where would you like him to sit?
Just come on.
Sit here?
Yes, sir.
And I apologize folks if my back is to you. Thank you first off for having me and I apologize that this is kind of in a work in progress, I think I had two prior meetings with you because of an emergency at the office I had to cancel. My goal, when I, when I was running for office prior and once I got into office, I realized that how many folks really didn't know what my office did and as I went along, I made it my, my challenge to get out to each Board of Selectmen and try to educate them or inform them of what, what my office actually does. I feel it's important as leaders of town, if somebody sees one of my cruisers in town, one of your constituents come up to you and say, hey, why is there another county cruiser in Dunbar? You have a good idea why that might be. So hence is the reason why I'm here. Really briefly about me, I've been in law enforcement for thirty eight years. I started as a correctional officer after I got out of the Marine Corps, did that for three. Joined the town of Boscombe Police Department, spent twenty five years there, the last fourteen as their chief. I left Boscombe in oh seven and I joined the Sheriff's Department where I was assigned to the County Attorney's Office. I ran, as their director, I ran the alternative to prosecution program there for fifteen years, ran for office and here I am today. I was saying to one of the ladies in the office, I had the luxury of going to the academy with one of your former chiefs, he was actually my roommate, Chris Connolly. And it's really kind of neat because now Chris and I didn't only go to the academy and share a room together, but now we're bordering sheriffs, so it's kind of cool and Chris and I still have a good working relationship today. A little bit about the Sheriff's Department, we are the highest ranking law enforcement officer or officers or deputies in the state, we have full state jurisdiction. Technically, we could drive up to Colebrook tomorrow and run radar, I assure you that's not going to happen, but certainly that, that is a power that we have. We have more authority even than the state police does. That authority came over when we migrated over from, from England back in the day. And I always use the analogy that most people can remember is Robin Hood and the Sheriff of Nottingham. And as funny as that may be and how that was politicized on T V, that, that's really kind of a true story, that's how it was back in the day. They had sheriffs that went around and policed England back. So when we came over here, we brought that with us and that power that they gave the Sheriff's Department over in England came with us as well.
So you're here to collect taxes?
I am not, that's one thing that didn't, that didn't fall in the statute, I, that is a good point.
Get my bow.
So I have a, I have a four and a half million dollar operating budget, hence the reason I think it's important that you folks also know a little bit about us. Obviously Dunbar pays a portion of that. We're blessed to say that we still remain or try to remain the lowest portion of your tax dollar. We submitted a budget last year at the request of our commissioners with a zero percent increase. Now, that's not a different per town where you go to based on your assessment, but the overall budget didn't increase at all. So we as department heads were very proud of that. I'm not going to promise you that it's going to happen this year, but I, I know that we're doing our very best to, to keep, like we all do, to keep it within the means of everybody. My department is broken down into different divisions. I have seventy employees, that's both sworn and civilian. The first department that, pre-COVID, was very, very busy and then like everything else, the doors shut right down, that's my transportation department. We're responsible for bringing any inmate either from a penal institution to court or from court to a penal institution. And we go all over the state to do that. Some folks that may have committed a crime in Merrimack got incarcerated in Rockingham because they, they committed a crime there as well, so we may have to go to Rockingham County. We go to Berlin quite frequently, Berlin, as you well know, has a state correctional facility up there. We don't deal with the federal portion of, of the one up there, but we go to Berlin quite frequently. We're also charged by statute that if somebody was to commit a crime here in Dunbar and they were to flee to California and they were apprehended, we would be charged with flying two deputies out there to bring him or her back to answer to the charges that they're facing back here. Prior to the pandemic, we were doing roughly about seven hundred and twenty transports a month. So we were very busy, those, those floodgates are quickly opening back up. Went up back up to those pre-pandemic numbers, but last month we were close to five hundred, so those doors are starting to open up. I'm seeing that we're going to have a little less, technology has finally hit the court systems, thank God. And a lot of the arraignments we do now are done by video, which, which is a safety issue, which is great because now we don't have to bring a dangerous inmate from, from court, from court to prison or back. And it also is a cost savings for both the court and, and for taxpayers because we don't have to charge deputies. I have two vans which allow me to take fifteen inmates, prisoners, whatever you want to call them, at the same time, so that's very cost effective as well. When we go to Berlin, instead of sending, you know, if we get to bring back seven inmates, instead of sending six cruisers, we can just send up a van. And the vans are isolated, so it can be female, male, belligerent, combative, things of that nature. My other unit is my civil unit, civil is my biggest revenue maker. We bring in approximately three hundred and twenty seven, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year on civil process. Civil process could be anything from a landlord tenant writ, it could be what's called a writ of replevin, which for instance, if you bought a car and you went negligent on the payments, the court would order us to go get the car. It could be a domestic violence or divorce decree, but everything based on mileage and how far we have to go to serve it or what it actually is, is determined by statute on what we charge. The legislature was very kind to us last year, it's now in statute that every year we can go before the delegation and ask whatever the the C P I is that year that we can try to stay, stay up with inflation. It's minimal with exception of this year, but it, it, every little bit helps. Gas, like I'm sure your police department and highway and fire and everything, we're really taking it on the chin this year. You know, I budgeted for a dollar ninety a gallon and I was paying a couple of months ago, like all of us, even without taxes, four ten. So any little help we can get with civil kind of, kind of helps with that.
We're getting bicycles in this town.
Well, you know, it's funny you say, New London just got e-bikes where they actually are motorized and they have the gentleman in town that makes them, so they've donated at about ten thousand dollars apiece, but I, I hear what you're saying. One of the things when I took office that was disturbing to me is we do evictions of people who are either negligent on their rent or they've caused damage to the property or there's some type of illegal activity. Whatever it may be, when the court orders us to remove them, we, we have to go there and we do anywhere from five to seven a week. We assign Wednesday as our eviction day. And before I took office, we used to go open the door, not literally, but just put a boot in the fanny and say, good luck. And I said, timeout, there has to be a way to better do this because as soon as you put a family, a person or a child on the street, they become a burden to each and every one of us, they become a burden to your police department because they're probably going to commit crimes to support themselves or put food in the stomach, they become a burden to your welfare department and they certainly become a burden to society. So what I do now is I have my deputies research the individual reporting to the street. Whatever underlying issues we find that they may have, we bring the resources to the eviction. So if somebody's struggling with a mental health issue, if somebody's struggling with a substance use disorder, if somebody's homeless, without a job, we bring all those services there. Now you can extend the olive branch all the time, right, not everybody's going to take it. Eighty percent of the folks that we offer these services to are welcome and taking them, so I'm very proud that we've been able to, to implement that. I have a warrants unit, my warrants unit consists of two deputies and it's just like it sounds, all they do all day long is go around and look for people who have active warrants out for their arrest. Any, any given day, we have anywhere between five and six hundred active warrants, they could be something major or they could be something as minor as somebody owes somebody fifty dollars. But that's a revolving door, as soon as we take ten into custody, we get another twenty that come in. So that, that remains a very active unit as well.
Do you coordinate with federal and state on those?
We do, yeah, mostly with the marshals, especially on high risk entries. And then we also will utilize local law enforcement if we think it's going to be an issue as well. And the marshals are great, they have a great team and they do a really good job and the price is right, great. I have a detectives unit, we've done a lot of work here in Dunbar and as we have with, with other communities in Merrimack County, as, as I'm sure you all know, there's twenty seven of them, two cities that have been conquered in Franklin. We actively worked, and I have good news, I'm sure most of the people have already seen that, but we actively worked with Concord on that double homicide a few months ago. I don't know if you've seen it or not, but a person of interest has been taken into custody in Vermont just a few hours ago. And fingers crossed and not, not kissing and telling, I'm hoping there's going to be progress there. But my point being is, we, we did all we could to assist them. I sent one of my detectives down to do triage in the city of Concord so that they could take all of their deputies and go all hands on deck to start that initial investigation of the double homicide. You know, Betty Smith who comes to the police department with a bad check case, that's important to her. And they have that put in a basket and sit there for six months, I said, there's got to be another way we can do it. So I was able to put a detective down there to assist Concord. We also utilized our bike unit, mountain bike unit, because there was a lot of folks that were very uncomfortable going back on the trail system there when we didn't know actually what was going on and we did patrols in, in, in the greater Concord area. I am all about giving back to the communities that I serve. I work closely with, with your police department, your chief and I are very good friends, you have an excellent department here, something you should be very proud of. I'm very selective when I deputize certain other individuals throughout Merrimack County. And what I mean by that is, I will swear a person in that I trust and I know that I can rely on. Sometimes the crimes that happen here in Dunbar and the perpetrator isn't here and the investigation requires them to leave the jurisdictions that are behind you. This way, this allows them to have complete investigative authority and or arrests, so your chief and your sergeant are both deputized by me. My point being is, I don't, I'm very selective on who I do that with and I'm very happy to be able to do that for you guys. My detective unit is there for one reason and that's to assist communities that don't have the expertise or, or the personnel to handle ma- major cases. I was successful seven months ago in applying for a federal grant where I brought in a gentleman who was an expert on internet crimes, I C A C is what the acronym is, Internet Crimes Against Children. And I was amazed on how many crimes in the greater Merrimack County area are happening against our small, young men and women. I was told that we saw a three hundred percent increase during the pandemic and I was amazed by that and I said, why is that? And when it was broken down, I really could understand it. During the pandemic, we're asking people to stay home and work from home, so we classify those folks as our perpetrators. But at the same time, we're asking our children to be homeschooled or, and so there's our victims, so here we're the perpetrator with the candy store. So, you know, all this is way above my head, I, you know, I struggle with, with technology. I probably was meant to come across this country in a covered wagon when it comes to technology. The other night I said to my grandson, I said, hey, I've been sending you messages on Facebook, you haven't been responding. And he says, grandpa, Facebook's for old people, so case in point. But we've, we've been very successful there and I've been very happy with that as well. We have a communications department, we don't, we don't do communications for the town of Dunbar, but we do seventeen other communities. That's a very revolving door, it's a very thankless job, we pay not what they deserve. It's a very stressful job, when I started this back in the eighties, if a civilian came upon, upon a horrific scene, whether it be a motor vehicle accident or somebody with a knife to somebody's throat, they had to detach themselves. And there's a few of us in this room that remember where a payphone is, they had to detach themselves and go find that payphone. By the time they got to that, their stress level went from here to here, now they're talking and reporting it real time with a cell phone that we all carry around in our pocket. So the stress level has really increased in the communications department. A few years back, the, the state changed their retirement system from group two down to group one, which made it even more difficult. So I struggle with keeping people in there. We're in union negotiations now and hopefully I'll be able to bring up some of their pay. I have a court security division, I'm responsible by statute to supply security in all of our courts. So we have three, what we refer to as circuit, but they used to be districts, three district courts, one's located in Concord, the other one's in Huxit and one's in Franklin, and then we have the Superior Court, which is also located in Concord. So we're charged with all the security in all three, excuse me, all four of those courts. I have a great group of men and women that work there as well, they do a great job. I'm going to wrap up because I know you're really busy. We do a lot of extra stuff too, I have a deputy that's assigned to Homeland Security, his job is human trafficking. You know, we sit here in Dunbar tonight and say, human trafficking in New Hampshire, it can't be. Hey, I tell you, that's what I thought, but it, it's, it's, it's real. The amount of Asian women that are being smuggled across the Canadian border is astronomical, it just blew my mind when I saw the numbers. We hear about all the drugs coming out of Mexico and stuff, but for some reason we don't hear about this human trafficking thing. We, we did a search warrant a few months back, a location that will remain nameless, but it was a massage parlor. The, the way the women we found in there were being treated and the living conditions they were asked to live in was atrocious, it just blew my mind. So it's an eye-opener, but I'm, I'm just, I just throw it out there as information, I'm glad I can, can have somebody on the team, it's very beneficial. I also have a deputy that's assigned to the New Hampshire Attorney General's Drug Task Force where his main mission is to go and do undercover buys of illicit drugs. I'm sure everybody in this room knows that he is not looking for any work, but I'm happy that we can supply that as well. We do the D A R program, so I'll teach D A R in communities that aren't, that don't have the luxury of a D A R officer. We're doing four different communities right now, the deputy that I have doing it, he, he does a great job and he's really excited about doing it. So my vision of my office is to give back to the constituents that, that, that pay me, that pay my office. You know, years ago, we were looked at as a glorified taxi and that's not where it's been in the last twenty months. I have night patrols out now, I split the county by the Merrimack River, east and west, and that, the job of that deputy is just to roam around and go to hotspots. If there's a domestic here in Dunbar and he's nearby, he's going to come and back up your units. If there's a fire here and you need traffic control, he's going to come and do it. For my wavelength, outlying communities, Dunbar and being one, New London, if, if, if you have one officer on and he makes an arrest and he has to take that person to the county jail in Boscombe, he's out of town for three or four hours. Not anymore, when, when we have a deputy on, on duty, all they've got to do is call us, we'll come and do that transport. So that's my office, I really am glad that I had the opportunity to meet you gentlemen and, and share. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have one question for you. Why do former chiefs seem to lean to going into the sheriff's office?
You know, that's a good question, I, it may be the end of their career, it's a slower pace. There, the hour's a little bit more conducive to somebody that's been around for a long time. My night patrols only go till ten at night, I have a, a Saturday night patrol, but it's, 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 it's very seldom that they're, they're out on holidays. I have somebody on call twenty-four seven who gets called up quite frequently to the jail and things of that nature, but that would be my take on it. I have a very young group right now, I'm very blessed, we're, we're in a real bad situation in, in, in the country right now. Both private and, and government in trying to get employees, state police are down a record number, a hundred and one troopers, a hundred and one. Their capacity is three twenty. The, the state prison are down over eighty correctional officers and our county jail is down pretty close to thirty-five correctional officers. It's just, it's horrible what we're experiencing right now and it's not unique to municipalities, we hear it every day. You know, whoever thought you'd make twenty dollars an hour serving coffee at Dunkin' Donuts, well, it's there. So that would be my, but I, I'm blessed right now, I'm down one deputy. And I, 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 you know, I had a conversation with Chris, I don't remember what he said, I think you guys are in full, are you down one? Yeah, so both of us are in very good shape, you know, I look at Concord, I look at state police and the other places I referred to. The problem being is, in today's world, the carrot you hold, if it's not as big as the one that's waved in your face, they're gone. The days of loyalty and commitment, and it's not a bad thing, everybody's trying to better themselves for the, for the, themselves and their family and I get it, but the days of commitment, like when I started, it doesn't exist anymore.
Right.
You know, you look at a resume, if somebody doesn't have five jobs on it, it's wrong. Back in my day, if you had three jobs on it, you must be a problem, why are you moving around three times, right? So it's just, it's the new world.
Well, I've seen it in this town several times, where the chiefs get up to, you know, their chief for several years and they go to the sheriff's office, I'm thinking to myself, there's got to be a dollar and cents thing, they're not all going there for no reason.
Unless they go there after they retire and it's a part-time thing.
Yeah.
I have.
I think that's a lot.
Yeah, I have, I have four, four gentlemen that work for me that are retired police officers, two, two of them are chiefs, but they're restricted to only twenty-six hours a week, but still, they're, they're a big benefit.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you again, it's a pleasure to be here.
A lot of explanation though, it was, it was nice to hear because I did think that all I did was transport.
I, that's. Case in point.
More good syrup.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, enjoy your evening.
Thank you for coming.
Let me say, by the way, oh.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Thank you very much. All right, we can move right along. I got Steve Drews, did I say correctly your last name?
Yes.
Okay. You just bought a home, bought a lot, right?
Yeah, or under contract, yes.
Okay. Tell us what you want to do.
Well, first things first, before I officially buy the property, I just wanted to know more details in, about the road, I guess. I understand it's a classics road. It's about a three to five hundred foot stretch roughly, that's undrivable, like you can't just put down your own car to drive right down to the property.
For sure.
So I guess my biggest question was, do I have, if I buy the property, do I have authorization to fix that and have it graded out? Not to upgrade or change the road status, just to where I could bring down a vehicle to the property and have work done to the property?
I think yes, but the thing is, I like to have, I need the supervision of our road agent because I don't want the wrong base to be put in there. Obviously, the road's going to have to be brought up to what we call standards.
Class five is what I saw.
Your road, class five standards, and we have a delineation of this.
Yes.
You've got to copy that though, right?
I, yes, I have the copy of that currently, yeah.
What I wouldn't want is you put the wrong material down there and then we're, then we're starting from zero or backwards.
Right.
And so I like that if you do anything to the road in support of working on your lot, I would say it has to be coordinated with our road agent.
You know, because if you, give me a, for instance, if you put sand in there to fill the hole and then try to put some good stuff on top, that substandard sand down below there wouldn't be good for the road construction later. So it would be doing yourself and anybody else goes to upgrade the road down there, just, just justice. So if we go through our road agent and he says, yeah, this material's fine if you want to upgrade, because it is a class six road, so people have right to travel it, and if you own property and they have rights to, you know.
Work on the road, make it passable.
Yeah, I'm new to the whole deal, so I wanted, you know, provisions.
It, it is a challenge, I mean, it's one thing you pay for the lot, but you're going to have to, it's going to be another bill just to pay for the road to get to the lot. And that's, that's the biggest challenge you're going to be facing.
Right, yeah, because I've been in communication about potentially lowering the price of the lot due to, you know, fixing the road.
That's something you could definitely negotiate with the owners.
And what's, and what's the, I have the class five to bring it up, it says where it's possible.
Did you get the class road five standards or did you get them right up to what we did for that specific road?
It's the guidelines from the slide.
For that specific road, okay.
Yep.
It says. So it says fifty feet extending side to side where possible. I don't know due to the parameters of the road where it would be possible to do fifty feet worth because it's conservation on the left side. So would that go into the, my property and the other property? That go down the road in, or is it like because it's their property, it doesn't have to be fifty feet side to side?
I think there'd be an ease. To give you the, to give you the simple answer for that, whichever side is upgrading the road typically that it goes towards.
Okay, so.
Now that land that's opposite you down there, that's all the conservation needs with the town, so I don't see that being. As you're going down that part that needs to be upgraded, that's where the two stone walls really are, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
And then when you get down lower, there's no stone walls.
Correct, yeah.
So there's the center of the road. And somebody, somebody had brushed all this, brushed out of that road down lower in the flat area, but the hill is probably the hardest part. Now, if you're just upgrading that hill to get down there.
Yeah, for like logging and.
Yeah, you're not going to have to do it to the full width for that. But with this as talk, if you're trying to build a, you know, get a building permit on there to build on it, then you would have to.
So one won't be issued until the road would be class five? Okay, so it's okay to have logging companies come down and clear out the lot if I wanted to and all that prior, but I just won't have permission and authorization to do anything building wise?
Correct, and the building is like putting a foundation in, for example, that's, that's building.
No structures.
No structure at all.
Okay, so, okay, so not even like an R V or?
No, I think you could do an R V. No, I think you could do an RV.
Okay, so just not any, okay.
A structure, something like a septic system, um, any building over a hundred.
Basically, anything that needs a permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, it's a classification.
Okay.
Anything that needs a permit would, will need an upgraded road. The road would need to be upgraded.
Okay.
The good news is, it doesn't have to be paid, just brought to.
Yeah, yeah, I did see that. I was like, "Okay, it'll be a little cheaper than..."
But I think before any mo, any material goes into the, onto the road's surface, it should be approved by the road agent.
Absolutely.
Okay, so who?
And the only other thing that's important on this is whichever lot you pick on there.
It's the, I have the lots.
Number two, it's the second lot.
It's the first one, so it's the E three dash two forty-three, so it's the first one, and then there's the second one on the first one.
So what he's talking about is there's the Zeller's House, there's a three-acre lot, he is, they're to advertise for sale. He's the next lot, which is a seven-acre lot, then the one further down is not being addressed at this time.
There's a couple of things. There's a lot of wetlands on those lots, you gotta look at that and look at that old map that was made of those. And some of those houses are further back off the road too.
Yeah.
Um, and you gotta upgrade that road to the frontage of the lot in there. I think that's two hundred and fifty foot frontage down there, 'cause it's their village district.
It's median, yes, that's correct.
So you gotta go like where the turnaround would be, be, when you hit your lot, you gotta do two hundred and fifty feet worth of upgrade.
Okay.
So you don't get to go down that far lot or any of that, but you have to do two hundred and fifty feet of your lot, because that's the minimum frontage requirement for the upgrade of the road. And then there'll have to be a turnaround made. If nobody upgrades the road past you for the first however many years, there'll have to be an upgrade, uh, turnaround on your road.
Okay.
On your lot.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because the turnarounds is to facilitate plow, for example.
Right, yeah, okay.
And I think Jeff will guide him through that recommendation of the.
It's Mr. Jeff Crosby is his name. Uh, Lean can give you contact information.
I will.
He does not do email.
Okay.
But he will meet you down there. He lives locally, so he can help you with all that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's a challenge. I'll go that way.
Yeah, uh, so once it's class five, I wouldn't have to do any maintenance of my own, right? It would be plowed and it.
The road would have to be, as soon as you'd be working with your engineer, your construction to get it brought to standards, it'd be inspected by our road agent and our en, town engineer, then we'd accept the road.
Okay.
And once it's accepted, we, we inherit the maintenance.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Does that, uh, with, and then I guess final question with that, then lower the taxes on a particular property due to the road now being?
Probably raise them.
Raise them.
Right, right.
Yeah.
They don't, your taxes will go out.
That's what I meant to say. Yeah, never miss that.
Yeah. But it'll be a challenge, and that's, I think historically, it's been the challenge there. So I'll say good luck to you and happy negotiations.
Yes, thank you. Thank you guys.
Okay.
I'll get your Jeff's number tomorrow. If you give him a call, schedule a appointment.
Okay, we're gonna move on. If that's all, you all set?
Yes, everyone's set.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for asking the questions before you do anything.
Yes, yeah, I just, yeah, knew all this.
Okay.
Send me an email.
I will.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay.
Bye, Steve.
Have a good night, guys.
Thanks. We have a historical commission come and, uh, come on.
Yes, yes, but before that, one quick thing, on demand stand. I mean, Gil Martell wanted to be here, but she couldn't. She and I are the last two members of the Town Common Project standing. And we know there's been some talk about the roof, and we've watched it through the years. Before anything is done, we would love to be included in, um...
That's next on the agenda.
Oh, it's actually on the agenda now?
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay then.
But we can go out of order since the same person's gonna be talking about both issues.
Okay, well, I'd, I'd be done, I'll be done now, then. I'll just, basically, we wanna be included in the, in the process. We have some ideas. We, we really dislike the idea of asphalt shingles, and we know there's thirty-five hundred in the, the, what, the ma, the maintenance fund, which we can tap into, but if this, we'd like to discuss it. We'd just like to be involved.
We, we like to have a, we don't wanna go plastic again.
We know, and we would be talking to professionals that know, that would have some good ideas about what could happen.
But if you guys wanna come to us with some options, we're open to that.
Absolutely.
Then, then some more.
The thing is, it's, I view it as not a historical building, in historical center of town, but not a historical building. And so, am I open to asphalt? Yes, I am, but I can be convinced otherwise if you have a better plan.
That's what we were hoping.
Okay, I'm not.
And we, and we may not have a better plan, but we wanna talk, we wanna talk to someone who knows more than we do.
As Dave said, just come up with some ideas, present them to us, and we can.
Look into options and.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you know, it's not, it's not, this, it's holding up plenty good. If it was happening next year.
I know, and it's not heated spaces, nothing under, and there's no leaking. Believe me, I've been up there crawling around looking, so.
But this piece is, uh, the roof is disintegrating.
The pieces are falling off, and short of gluing them up there temporarily, you just, yeah.
We wanna do the right thing, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Um, now the historical research, and Fred and Lee Martell are here also. Um, we've been working on something for a couple of years now, and the research, research takes so much time, so I'm not gonna get into the details of it. But what we would like to do is we would like to install metal signs, like the brown ones that the state uses, at the old schoolhouse sites. Back in the time, we had eleven school districts. Uh, we had three to begin with, four to begin with, five, then nine. Let's not worry about that. Let's pick a point in time when we had eleven school districts, and we were working with a sign shop at the prison. Um, we are trying to, we, we've pretty much ascertained where these sites are. Some we've identified by old photos and background material, like a rock and things like that. So it's a matter of talking to the property owners and, um, getting permission from them. And it would be similar to what we did with the Stark, um, Mill Bridge. And we'd like, if we can, we'd like a little information on it. We also wanna keep it very simple. We don't want it... If you notice the one we've had put up at Bailey's Corner, we made that very big on purpose, because we didn't want people, we wanted people to read it when they were going by without slamming on their brakes to look at something. We don't want something that big if it's going to be near residential property, so we're gonna try to keep it small. It, this is kind of the idea. You know, you would have the schoolhouse in the district, you would have an overall map of the town with a faded map, and then the district's drawn in and a boulder site, and then maybe a little information about that particular school. Um, and then down here, what's it would say, "For more information, contact, you know, go to the library." But, um, this way, we just, a road, a driveway was just plowed through one of the sites where we had the original foundation. And it was the only place on the property the, the drive, the owner could put a, a driveway through, so we get it. But it'd be nice to, the schoolyard maple tree is still standing. It'd be nice to have a sign there. Um, Fred has already, and had two years ago, when we were working on this project to begin with, he had already talked to, what'd you tell him about Stark?
The, oh, the Army Corps of Engineers?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, the, uh, Stark School down at, uh, down by the Stark Pond. It's where the bridge on, from Mansion, Ray Road and Burrows Road, well, that's it, that's Hoy Road, come together. Right there is where the school was.
We found the foundation.
We found the foundation. We found also all parts of machinery and stuff, because it became a garage a bit later.
After it wasn't in use, well, actually, here we go. Master Hard was the first to teach in this area. This is the Stark District. It's unknown when the first school was built. The last school was red with a hip roof. The final class was taught in eighteen eighty-nine, and that is some hard to come up with, 'cause we don't have all the, all the boards. Sold after nineteen thirty and converted into a blacksmith shop, but later transitioned into a garage. It's last shown on a nineteen twenty-six map as a garage.
Where is this again?
It's in hiding in Plain Sight. If you go, if you got the Stark Mill sign here on your left.
Gotcha.
You got Stark Pond here. You don't go around Ray Road, you take the dirt road. So you've got that triangle of land.
Right.
If you step off the dirt road into the land, there's kind of a flat wet area, and then it slopes up. The schoolhouse was right there.
Gotcha.
And we found the foundation. We found the outhouse foundation. It usually has to be, the school we found is either near, um, running fresh water, and almost all the sites have some of the same components. There's a place to get water. They had a, usually a schoolyard shade tree, usually a maple. A number of them still exist. Um, the one that we found on Mansion Road has been hiding in Plain Sight. The owners didn't even know that the foundation was there. It's cut granite. And she was gardening within fifteen feet of it and never knew it was there. It's totally undisturbed. It'd make a great archaeological project for the kids, but I, that's a whole other issue. Um, in any event, so we have permission from those owners. Now we just have to step up to the rest. So I just wanted you to know we've been doing it. We will be mindful of where the signs go. We will work with the property owners. We won't put anything where Jeff's, it's gonna become a plowing hazard. And are there any other considerations you want us to look at?
Well, I was just gonna say that if you look at the roads, like a lot of them are three-rod roads, that's forty-nine and a half feet wide. So even within our right-of-way, even not in Jeff's way, you still have the ability to put some of those within the right-of-way of the town.
Again, I think it would be how much attention the homeowner wants to draw to the property.
I think getting the homeowner's, uh, permission is probably key.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you, you'd have that, I would as well.
All right, that works. And this could be another year. We've got the posts ready. We're working on the signs, but you know, it's tying up all the details. I still have a couple more schools I have to pin down by going through the old reports and find out when the class, last class was held, so we're, we're working on the dates.
Now, the one on Montalona Road, the roadway is actually right where that one was.
Yes.
Gonna have to put it off to the side, I guess.
We are. We did find part of an old school desk when we were in there with that, and we found where the old well was.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, um, but not all the schools were in just one location. I mean, the South School, which was the Coleman School, the Curly School, they moved them all over the place. So in some cases, it will be at the only slash known location. At others, it might be at the third known location, 'cause the homeowner doesn't want it on their land. They're all very unique situations. So we're just gonna try to make it as consistent as possible.
I'm excited. I think it's good.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I don't think we have any concerns.
It's gonna be a little picture each schoolhouse on the sign?
No, because we don't have, there's two we don't have pictures of. We think we do, but we don't. That's, the information has been very hard to come by.
How about the ones that you do have pictures of?
Well, it would be too busy to get a sketch on there, and that might cost money. We're gonna try to standardize the, the major portion of the sign, so they can print all those, and then these two portions will probably be flexible. It will save us a little bit of money. But we, it's, we, it's self-funded. We have the money.
Fred, do you have a comment?
Yeah, uh, in case we ever run into a problem trying to locate a landowner, we know we can go through the tax map. That's what we've been doing. Okay, but contact information, like, everybody's got cell phones except for me nowadays. You know, it used to be, look in the Dunbar phone book, you could call a number or something.
Yeah, right.
Is there a, could a selectman or a police department give us any information, help, help, in case we run into roadblock?
We don't have anything, I would think.
No, and I know that the town court's very protective of her list of clients. You won't release anything.
She will, she will. If she has an email, she will forward something. She won't share addresses, and she won't share phone numbers, but she will forward something.
When you're in a, a pinch, we should post it on the homepage of the town website. It might be a neighbor that remembers somebody or grew up in, you know, and be able to reach that person, you know.
We've got feelings about all of it.
As an example, we have one landlord permission, and, well, they ended up selling the house and moving out. New owners come in, they have no clue about this.
Oh.
So my wife and I drove down to the driver's. She said, "You can't do that." "Yeah, you can." Just checking for smoke. So I go banging the door, just to talk to him, right? And he's like, "Who are you?" I introduce myself, stuff like that. And I have some information that we have about that particular school site and give it to him, you know, to think about it and stuff like that. So this particular landlord's agreed to let us do it, so. But in case we have some landlords, well, we can't really find out where they are, because they're, on the tax maps, it'd be a name, but how do we contact them, you know?
I, I would say, let's, uh, go the route that Lean suggested. Let, let the town contact them.
Yeah.
And just to, and then it goes down as a factor.
Attach a note to the outside of the mailbox. We can use the inside, but you can use the outside.
True.
Anything that the postal carrier doesn't touch, you can use.
Do you know that the Montalona Schoolhouse is, so here, I hear from the tenants?
I, I know ones that. I used to get them fireproofed all the time.
Wait, well, actually, the Montalona is, that's one of the ones that actually became a house. So the Coleman, so South School became a house. That's where Shelley Dalcol is. It's just a tiny little nucleus, but it's completely unchanged on the inside. And when we brought one of the former students in there, two years before he passed on, he sat down, and he got tears in his eyes, and he goes, "I'm now sitting in the first grade, and that's where I sat in the second grade, and that's where I sat in the third grade." And we've got a videotape of him in there, so we've, we've been lucky to find some students that actually went to these schools. Very, very interesting.
Well, I would say, continue on.
Thank you.
And I, I, we have no, we'll try to assist you any way we can.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, all of us have access to the website.
All right, next on the agenda, Nora.
Nora. Hi, I'm Nora Lamarck. I'm vice president of the Dunbarton Garden Club. This is Sharon Conway, who's also a member, um, of the Garden Club, as well as the director of DES Roots Program, which, uh, she and Molly, uh, started last year. So I'm here to talk about three things: Halloween, um, lights on the common, and Santa Claus, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus. It's very special. We have to write him a letter to invite him. So I am with Halloween. We will be doing the same thing that we usually do. Um, we are not sure if we're gonna pitch a tent or not, uh, depending on the weather, but right now, we're not. Uh, we'll hand out candy, we'll decorate. Uh, the only thing different that we would like to do this year is to add, um, jack-o'-lanterns to the west side of, um, the library. So, uh, we're parking up with the Roots Program, and we're...
Just on the lawn you're talking.
Huh?
Just on the lawn?
You want, you just want it on the lawn?
No, we're, we're, we're.
Well, on the west side, so we're looking, I'm looking at a picture right there, so, um, maybe some on the steps, some in between the two balconies, and, uh, they will be lit with tea lights. We might put some in the flower beds.
I have no problem as long as they're put tea lights.
Yeah, they're tea lights, yeah, for safety issue. Um, so there'll be, hopefully...
I was expecting flames shooting out of them.
No, no flames.
Not fireworks.
No, so that's the only thing different that we're doing, trying to involve the, more of the community, especially DES.
Okay, access, access to the, uh, the balconies up top. No, you're talking on the bottom.
No, I'm talking about the lower part.
Okay, great, great.
The lower part, yes, yes, the steps. Mary would like us not really to use the steps, but she won't be there, you know, uh, Sunday and Monday. We're gonna start decorating on Saturday, so hopefully, we'll have somebody drop off their pumpkins, you know, the jack-o'-lanterns on, and what they can do it again on Monday. Um, so that's for Halloween, and I don't think there's anything else.
Yeah, hours have to coordinate with the town Halloween hours.
Four, four through seven.
Right.
So hopefully, uh, anyone that drops off, uh, a pumpkin will take it home with them. If not, we'll move all of the pumpkins down on, in, on the flower beds, and then someone else, uh, will pick them up on, uh, Tuesday morning and hopefully donate them to a farm, you know, where goats and pigs can enjoy them.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
Um, then, uh, on November fifth, we would like to wrap the trees, the balcony and the bandstand with lights that we usually do in the past. I think this is our fourth year of doing that. And the reason we want to do it early, 'cause it's very hard to, uh, in winter's cold weather, to wrap lights around the trees. Um, so we did, we did that last year, and, uh, it worked well.
And lighting, lighting was commenced when?
Uh, so, uh, the day after Thanksgiving, on November twenty-fifth, we'd like to turn the lights on, um, on the common, but not on the bandstand. Then on December third, when Mr. and Mrs. Claus come, uh, we'll put the Christmas tree up that day, and then we'll turn on the, the Christmas tree, and, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Claus will come and hand out, uh, candy canes, and we'll have hot chocolate too for the parents and things like that. Uh, we'll take down the Christmas tree probably, um, the first week in January. I think we took it down New Year's, uh, Day last year.
And lights?
And then we would like the lights to stay on till, uh, the thirty-first of January. Uh, we've got a lot of great feedback. A lot of the Garden Club members have said, um, they would really like the lights on, because, you know, people suffer from seasonal, you know, deficit, you know, when it's so dark during the winter.
Lean likes them.
I know Lean likes them, and we have to definitely leave them on.
But, but, but I, I seem to recall the last year, I think we went to the middle of the month, or did we go to the end?
You went to the middle. I think the year before, you went to the end.
Right.
I think actually, you probably went into February, the, the year after, but, uh, we would definitely like the end of January.
Uh, lights would go on at what, or at dusk and go off at what time?
Yeah, there's timers.
Right.
Yeah.
So they're off by what time in the evening?
About ten, I would say. That's like four hours.
Okay.
And...
Jen, that's the only concern about, um, I'm worried about the other, the neighbors on the common.
Well, we did talk, we did talk to the neighbors, and they all liked them.
Okay.
There was only one problem with one neighbor, and that was something big and flashing, and, uh... There was only one problem with one neighbor and that was something big and flashing and uh they, you know, and that's not gonna happen. It's gonna be those small little lights.
So it'd be the end of January, you'd be taking them down with proposal at this point?
Not taking them down, turning them on, you know.
But just doesn't turn them off, wait for better weather to take them down.
Exactly, yes.
Gentlemen, last year, I just wanna, um we we did it to the middle of the month of January and it was a compromise. And uh they asked for the end of the month, we went to like January fifteenth. And so um I I'm open, um but the thing is, we don't, we can think about it, make a decision next week and get back to on that one. I could get some other input.
Okay.
You could get some other input.
Okay, I'll go with Fred first.
Uh the selectmen are in charge of this mask mandate that we had last year, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
For, because the kids couldn't get anywhere near anybody.
Correct, for Halloween, correct.
I'm not talking about the for Santa.
True.
Um is that gonna be gone with? I have no problem with it.
It's gone. No, I understood, but the thing is, right now, there is no mask mandate. In fact, the mat, the use of masks have, it's been somewhat debunked too, so.
But you're gonna, you're gonna allow the kids to come up to sit on Santa?
I'm sa- I'm saying again.
You're gonna allow the kids to come up to sit on Santa and stuff?
Yes. I have no problem with that.
Me neither.
Okay, Leo?
Uh yeah, if you recall, last year, uh someone was injured tripping into the wires. And so I guess, you know, I understand where they wanna get them up early because it's easier, but those wires are all exposed above ground, am I correct?
Are you talking about the extension cords?
Yeah, since we're talking about.
I think the extension cords uh were put down later, uh Leo.
Because, because someone got tripped into that last year and got hurt, not really serious, but it could have been, you know? And um they didn't wanna report it because they didn't wanna seem like they were being, you know, anti-Christmas or. So my, I guess my point is that those are all wires running, lines running across the lawn, which are hazardous, you know? I guess when there's snow on them, there's no hazard.
Yeah, I think um last year, um the extension cords were not put down uh until much later.
Okay, alright, just, you know, just to keep in mind that, you know, yeah, right.
Yeah, and I do hear what you're saying there.
No, one other thing, uh right now, we're using kind of a quarter from this parking lot, uh you kind of see it lined off to go and get the books for the library.
Yeah.
I'd like to make sure that we don't run any cords across that.
Okay.
Um until we get this up and running on the backside, which is gonna be around the same timeframe, hopefully, so.
We're we're targeting it until January.
Issue, so.
Oh, January, yeah.
Yeah. And so I think it's a, you know, we gotta keep the library in excess open and without the trip hazard, so that's what we're concerned with.
But you know, we're talking just that quarter they're using, so.
So that's a pathway she uses, is it?
Yeah, but I mean, like a cord from that tree can come through the air onto this tree and then down and over, so.
Okay, and then down, okay, alright, we can do that.
Fred.
Could the cord situation be really alleviated if they put them up on, see the limbs of the trees, keep them high, like seven feet?
Yeah, that's what I just suggested, so.
Yeah. Um the reason we don't put them in the trees on the branches, because those trees are old and we don't want to damage, you know, a lot of the branches, you know?
I can see, I I.
But we could definitely run a few uh to eliminate uh that. There is no, there's no power on this side. See, all the power comes from the building from the town hall.
Right.
So unless, you know, we look into solar, but then if you don't have sun, you know.
January, I, maybe not.
But we'll, we'll um really be careful and look at the extension cords where we put them.
I think our timeframe's gonna be very close anyway, because I think some of the last things are coming in early November.
Okay, alright. Okay.
I would just like the, I don't wanna make a decision right now on the end date.
Okay.
Okay, I like to just let these, get some other input from other people, and the end date, I like to keep open, and we'll just, I would say no later, no, no later, no earlier than the fifteenth, we would have it uh shut down.
They they might be, I mean, I wonder if you could consider wait till after someone's birthday, which is January eighteenth or something, nineteenth. Uh that was mentioned at one time.
To to to, so noted, and I so noted with a spot.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
You know, Justin can be bought with cookies.
Oh, he can?
You'd have to leave him up a lot longer for the. Lines may.
We'll, we'll, we'll get a decision on the.
So are you gonna put the extension cords down on the fifth?
That's, no, no.
Okay, so those won't go down till?
We're trying to do it uh, you know, much later, that way.
Okay, so closer to the twenty fifth than you actually?
Uh probably before that, because that would be Thanksgiving week, you know.
Okay, so you do that the weekend before or something?
We could, we could look at that, yeah, as long as the weather, we have to look at the weather too.
Yeah, and and again, just trying to again reiterate his, if someone did trip on on the extension?
Yeah, I didn't. Yeah.
Yeah, I think is with, with with Santa being there.
Yeah.
Extension cord is around.
Yeah.
We're just, are we setting ourselves up for a disaster? I don't want that to happen either.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's after too, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's trip hazards everywhere.
Yeah.
You gotta look down sometimes, there's roots, do you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, um.
Uh when would I know about the end date?
Uh probably before the uh, next meeting.
By the next meeting.
Next meeting.
The next meeting. And how will I find out about that? You'll call, you'll, they don't pay you.
They're paying on the twenty second.
I I just, I worthwhile, I wanna get some other input and before we, before we make a snap decision on that.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
And gentlemen, any other questions?
Nope.
Nope. Thank you for coming in and coordinating early with us, thank you.
Thanks. You're very welcome. And anyone is welcome to join the festivities, any other group.
Uh please, I'm gonna uh give you an invite to make sure you use the uh, uh we'll coordinate with the town administrator for the marquee that'll in front of the library, the sign in front of the library. There's no reason why we can't advertise it.
Okay.
The lighting ceremonies and all that, you've done in the past.
Yeah.
Include the webpage too.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah, great, thank you.
Okay.
A little warrant?
Yeah, we have a warrant.
I've got the one one.
Four copies, this is for Linda, send this up to us.
Yeah. Yeah.
What's that for?
This is for the uh, it's a notice for the, for the election of November four. So do we have to make a motion on this, Lean?
Yes, you do.
Okay. I think it's just four copies and one warrant.
Yeah.
Okay, state, I'm gonna read this warrant. State of New Hampshire to the inhabitants of Dunbar, in the County Merrimack, New Hampshire. You are hereby notified at to meet at Dunbar Community Center, twenty Robert Rogers Row, Dunbar, on Tuesday, the eighth of November, twenty twenty-two. The polls will be opened between the hours of seven AM and seven PM to act upon the following subjects. To bring your votes for governor, United States Senator, United States Representative in Congress, Executive Counsel, State Senator, State Representatives, and County Officers. To bring your votes for constitutional question amendments. And this will be given under the hands of the seal on thirteen October in the year of two thousand twenty-two. And this is gonna, this is a warrant and we uh can vote on it and then sign it. All in favor of the warrant as written?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we have a second?
Uh, I'll second.
And now I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So approved, and I will sign the first copy and then second?
Another long day.
No, no, it's gonna be.
Twenty hour day. I love it.
Two for you, two for you, then sign them and pass them and we'll switch around. Okay. While you're signing that, I have another warrant to appoint Nancy Mullen, Dunbar, in the County Merrimack, for the vacancy of ballot, clerk, in the vacancy for a ballot clerk in said town, whereas uh we subscribe to have confidence in your ability and integrity, program duties of said office. We do hereby appoint you the said, this, you, the said Nancy Mullen, a ballot clerk of said town. Upon taking oath of your office and having this appointment, you are certified and certificate of said oath of office recorded by the town clerk. You shall have the powers to perform duties and be subject to the liabilities of such office until another person shall be po- be chosen and qualified in your stead. Given in this, our hands on thirteenth day of October, twenty twenty-two. I'm gonna call, I make this motion as written.
I second.
It's actually an appointment, not a warrant, is it?
It's a uh, we're appointing her, we have to sign all three of them.
Okay, you mentioned that it was another warrant, so it's an appointment.
Oh, I stand corrected. It's an appointment.
Okay.
I stand corrected for uh semantics. It is not a warrant, it's a, as written, I recommend that we, I take a second on this. I make the motion as uh, as so stated. Any a second?
I second the appointment.
All in favor of the appointment?
Aye.
Aye.
You better let Lisa read this.
Dave, you read too slow, I was just trying to move things along here. Leo said he wants to go on my time.
Obviously, you're reading too fast.
You pass this to him and then pass me the, before we get too confused here.
Not confused, okay. Alright. Okay, um per RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B, subpar paragraph, number number three B, we want to accept, we like to accept three hundred dollars from the Dunbar Congregational Church to support the welfare department with their contribution in the assistance of welfare client. For the purposes, the the name of the, for privacy purposes, the name of the client is not being um so publicly notified, noticed. However, this is just a uh recommendation for a uh receipt, to receive the three hundred dollars from a, from a church in support of this client.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion on this?
Um I wanna ask Lean one thing. Lean, did we give the church uh the money that we only do for their pantry?
We do, every year, yeah. Honestly, we did. No, that won't get dispersed until the first week of uh December approximately.
Okay, so that's all done? That's when we disperse it, the end of the year?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all, we said, do we approve this?
Huh?
All in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye. Sign, just initial. Alright.
Now, we do have money as in our welfare department.
We do, but this this case is gonna exceed that, so we're just reaching out to other sources for assistance.
No, but this, this was a.
Alright.
Alright, I have a uh work change order, something we discussed in June. The flooring that we selected was not available, and so a substitute flooring was picked and it has a small price increase. Uh total for the change order will be nine hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Dave, do you wanna talk to this?
Yeah, I was notified by the contractor, along with the architect, that the flooring that the architect had picked out was discontinued and the color of sand, so they asked him to get an equivalent flooring from the flooring manufacturer. Um the equivalent flooring had a different price on it, and so it was approved by the architect already and was sent to us for our final approval um for the change request, so.
I make a motion, we approve the work order as delineated.
I second.
Any further discussion on this?
Nope.
Nope.
Here, you're not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can assign that work order, please, okay? Someone should sign, I guess.
Sorry, just the top page. Okay. Mailbox items now. We have a in the mailbox, a poorly uh welfare report. No one has read it, but the thing is, I'll leave it in here for reading in the box.
Yeah, see, that would make all the work, thanks.
Alright, gentlemen, there's a um, the food inspection service of uh the state, responsible for school inspections inspected our uh facility. And there's a refrigerator down there, which belongs to the community center. It doesn't mean cold.
Isn't, isn't that the school's issue though, why are we in the middle of it?
Because it's our refrigerator, it has nothing to do with school. It's something that we use to put, store stuff in when we have uh activities down there. And so.
We're only storing.
And so it belongs to us, and uh the question is, um it was on email, did you get a chance to read the email?
I read the email, but I understand, like, like if a, if a teacher came in with a lunch.
They have their own refrigerators, they shouldn't be using that.
They're not using that one.
And so, well, I I've, I've looked in the past, the only thing that's kept in there is like, um, let's say someone at election day brought a lunch in there, threw a lunch in there or a cold drinks and. However, it doesn't mean cold for the food service to be in that facility, because it's not a commercial refrigerator. So they kindly asked us for us to do something, make disposition of that, in other words, remove it.
I didn't even realize the town had one in there.
Yeah, I thought the only refrigerator we bought was through that joint uh community fund that we collect and that the school.
It's half the school's, half ours.
Picks up, yeah. But did we get someone that donated a refrigerator to us?
Not that I'm aware of.
I thought some maybe.
I just wanna make sure it's not the, like, for the teachers and and that end of the school.
Yeah, no, the, this is a kitchen in the community.
Could we, could we, uh? Yeah.
I know, but.
You know it's refrigerator, if you know something.
I know the refrigerator, but if this, the school's gotta be using that, is what I'm thinking.
No, they they're not, in fact, they're forbidden.
Not for school lunch.
Right, but for, but for, just to have it in that facility is what's violating this, that a cold.
Yeah.
And so the question is.
It could be in the storage closet right next to it, but it can't be in that kitchen.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Might they be using it for basketball?
No, I don't think so.
That door is locked normally.
Yeah.
During the basketball?
Yes.
Yeah, the whole kitchen's locked up.
Oh, really?
We only have one door access, because the janitors are during the.
This could be open all the time.
Yeah, it's locked now.
Okay.
So uh the question is, um maybe we can talk to, someone can talk to the school administrator
Yeah, call Shelley and get.
and see if they wanna move into this, to the uh janitor's room or something.
Teachers.
Janitor's room.
To the janitor's room, right to the left.
Where on the floor. And that way it could be used for, other than food preparation, the food preparation area.
Cause we don't put a heck of a lot in it during voting.
No, but it's nice to have a refrigerator, you wanna keep stuff cold. And that room is usually accessible to us, because that's where we store some chairs. I'm not talking about the outside, I'm talking about the inside.
Okay.
So work in progress, no decision on that, but the thing is, uh I told the young lady who who mentioned it to us, uh Food Service Director for both Dunbar schools, that we would be addressing it, and we, right now, we're just in the process of finding a whole.
Right.
Yeah.
Hate the disposal, that's not on the uh on the top of my agenda right now.
Especially, it's still running, it's.
Exactly.
It's money. It's just a regular fridge, but I mean, still.
It's probably worth around two, two hundred dollars.
I read that one, right, Mike?
Yeah, that's the same thing. Alright, moving on, um.
Tiffany Carbone.
Yeah, uh this is a, we got a, we all have a message, we all copied on it. FEMA is accepting copy, uh we have some flood insurance maps uh being reviewed. I, it was so cute us to go find it. I'm gonna ask uh Lean if her office could spend some time on the internet, find it, download it. If they can't, I want them to call and have it sent to us, that's one of the options on here, hard copy.
Well, I noticed that the map wasn't attached to the email, but I thought the blow up was gonna be the map and it's just a letter.
Right, and the, and the letter, again, it's a.
Mike seemed to think it was a link in the.
In the, cause the link, no, there's a link inside, smack, smack in the middle of it.
There is.
And so I either want, um can your office download the map and print it up for us?
Yeah.
For, for the next meeting, we got some time, and uh just look at the, just reading for deadlines, I didn't see any deadlines.
I know that the previous one the town has, Mike, only showed the flood control area, a little bit of the town over there has a, has a flood map.
Yeah.
We actually, when we adopted it, uh we do, we do not have any residents in that flood area, so.
Just had that on there. Right.
So I I I just think we, we need more information before we review it.
Okay.
That was a hard letter to understand.
I'm agreeing with that too.
Alright.
You want to sign that?
Yep. We got a letter from uh the uh the Hodgmans.
The primary residents on the school street.
Right. They wanna know how the parking situation. Thing is, um, there's no reason why people cannot park on the school street.
No.
In front of, it's not, it's legal.
Can you guys uh implement a one side parking only or something? I mean, I can't imagine.
I haven't seen anybody park on the school street.
They do, most of the time it's them, it's the owners, they'll have their cart or they'll have their extra car or.
Don't, don't, during the day.
I've seen people parking in front, get vegetables.
Yeah, but they're on Robert Rogers, and then sometimes they'll pull around the corner, but.
They pull right in front of the fence there and they park, get their vegetables. But I haven't, uh, none of these workers have been parking on the school street.
No, no, that's not the issue. They're saying that once the job is complete, they would like support from the selectmen to limit the kind of parking, so if you wanna read it, I mean, it's just.
I'll read it afterwards.
Um I I think it's worth thinking about. Um, I, I think it's worth thinking about, but the thing is, I'm not ready to make a, the recommendation at this point.
Yeah, I think noted, but, we'll, uh.
Parking is.
I think we have to cross, cross that bridge when we get there, look at the building when it's completed. I mean, they're talking about a theater when the building's complete, but.
You might wanna, you might wanna look at that prior to that being used, then.
Well, the thing is, um, it's a public street, you can't park on the.
Yeah, but it's narrow street.
Right, right, but the thing is, um.
Could be a fire hazard.
Um, but any street would be, I mean, my street gets congested when people park on one side, and you, you can't have two cars go by you.
It is narrow there, that school street is narrow.
And, and the thing is, no parking on grass either.
By the time you park, and there's people's driveways are there, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You might wanna look into that.
Is there a way?
That's why I'm not making, just not judging, like.
Is there a way for the board to implement a one-way? I think that's, I mean, I've gotten to the point where I've had some close calls, trying to get out by the last house on, onto Robert Rogers', that I now leave the parking lot and go to Stark Highway, up the road, and then come by Robert Rogers', only because it, the, his picket fence, the little stand, bushes, trees, whatever else is there, it's hard to get your nose out without somebody coming quickly from that, um.
I'd like to have the, uh, uh, how we, I'm not sure of the procedure for implementing that, I'd like to have, uh, maybe the road agent and the chief of police address both those issues. Dave, are you familiar, comfortable with that?
How about Wiggins?
Yeah, I, uh, I think it's a small common, and I don't think we should limit it myself, but I think we should wait till there's an issue before.
You might think different if it was your house there.
Well, yeah, I haven't seen the issue yet, Leo, so.
No, I say, I say you might think different if your house was there, and people were parking there every, every time that they were having a function there, and like I said, there's a house with a driveway, a little piece of land and a driveway, a little piece of land and a driveway, and next thing you know, they have a hard time negotiating.
Well, I'm not saying on their side of the road, I'm saying maybe this side of the road, we might only allow parking on one side, or vice versa.
Yeah, well, that's on me, you might wanna look at that, at that, prior to using that second floor, because, you know, you're gonna make those people miserable.
Yeah, that's something, I, I, I'm willing to definitely listen to that, I like the idea of parking on one side only. I like the idea of potentially making it one-way, too. You know, can, entry that way, coming out this way? But the thing is, one-way would start, uh, end at the parking lot, this would be in and out, but the, the one-way would stop right.
A lot of places do that, the state has all their.
The one-way would basically have to stop before the entry to that, their building.
Correct.
Because you have to go both ways in both sides of their building for egress.
Totally agree.
So it'd have to be up that road in all ways, even.
I'd like to see some recommendations from the road agent, from the police, and maybe the fire department is, uh, so, or suggested in the audience. For the fire department, they do. Just some ideas.
Yeah.
Okay, um, continuing, uh, just, uh, so, we have a, uh, Sergeant Tyler, who's been recommended by Chief Rimmer, for Officer of the Year nomination from the Dunbar Police Department. He wrote a nice letter in support of him, if you have enough to, make sure you read it, it was sent on email, too.
Well, you can reference that, I touched base with Officer Rumlab, and I thought, um, I thought it's outstanding that he's gonna be recommended for Officer of the Year through them. And I told him I would reach out to the board tonight and ask if we could send a letter from the board of selectmen, have Lean write something up where we're in favor and giving him our backing towards it, and he thought it was a good idea. Um, he said that it would have to be in before, I think he said January or something, but I thought we could do it fairly shortly. Just giving our, our support behind him as a board's like.
How many cars did he wreck?
Little bit of humor.
Yeah, I, I have no issue with that, I think that's.
Yeah, you think you could, uh, write something up for our board, we could sign it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but next meeting, I will get it out.
That'd be perfect.
Doesn't have, make a, he's got like a two-pager, we can make a one-pager and have a three-second sign-up, I think, if you want.
I mean, even a little paragraph, it doesn't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's in action.
Read, read through Chris, and then pick up on a couple highlights, and.
Okay, Greg Miller, do you remember the issue with the leak on the exhaust vent repair at the transfer station?
Yeah.
Well, we have, uh.
An email?
Yep.
Well, he met with Woody, right?
Yes, he did.
And that's the response there.
I didn't, I didn't really remember the exhaust leak part myself. Did I miss an email?
Well, the number of brackets.
It just came in. Yesterday, maybe?
Seven, eight, and nine, they, okay, recommend the new brackets, he's got a bunch of brackets, and he'd be, uh.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah.
The roof brackets? I don't remember talking about that.
Remember the brackets, and he glued them back down.
And they had pictures of.
Yeah, so the original one, he gave us a quote, right, for, for the, to replace all of them.
He gave us a, uh.
They're both there.
We have a quote, basically, remove, remain raining snow guard catchers, twenty-seven total, clean old sealant, drill, drill new hoses needed, install new lags, fill holes, seal and cover with rubber ice on the coating. And materials, a hundred twenty-four dollars, labor, eight hundred ten dollars, for a total of nine hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty cents.
And then he met with Woody after the fact, to, and what were they? He said if we chose not to go all of them, he's coming up with a recommendation for set rows.
Yeah, he. He said dealing with brackets, one through sa, one through six and ten through twelve. He's got specific ones that, um, would be, um.
Should be addressed earlier than later?
Right. Yeah, thanks, Dave.
I didn't know he had written on it.
No, it's just, no, it's just, uh.
Woody was gone for three, two weeks, so.
This was the, this is the quote for the work to be fixed.
Stopping the leak on, confirming it's, been repaired. But should.
You know, I, this, how's the maintenance line in Woody's shop, look?
This maintenance comes out of our.
Right, so it's, uh, maintenance line.
Yeah.
About a thousand dollars, nine hundred and change.
Pull up, right, one repairs.
My question is, uh, do we need a telephone call?
Do you have someone else, do I have, have a recommendation?
No, because the material's only a hundred and something, it's the labor, to get up on the roof, and.
But you probably, you probably, if you, what he's offering is another quote for the most serious ones, and, and we can defer on the other ones, if we so desire.
He hasn't given us a quote for the.
For the.
Reduced, but if you're up there, I don't know. Worth getting shoes on.
Silicon rubber ice coating, lags, labor removed.
It's a, it's a labor-intensive, uh, job.
Rainy snow guard catcher brackets, twenty-seven.
Nothing fun about that, pulling them off, scraping them off.
No, I agree. This is our handyman.
Yeah, and this is chasing a leak in the building, so I have no problem with that, I think we have.
I, I recommend we do it all, though.
Yeah, let's just.
I, I haven't read it, I haven't seen, so I need to.
We'll defer to Justin, make some chances, think you can do that.
I, I knew about the original one, but I haven't seen this set of them.
Looks like you did a pretty good job looking at them, though.
Yeah. I think let's do them all, clean them up, we have new lights in the roof. They fixed another leak already, and then this and take care of the last one.
Those skylights are too bright.
But they're not leaking, right, in the skylights, so that's good, then.
Just too sunny out.
But, I tell you, it's been nice, the weather's been wonderful down there, I, the place was, I went, uh, this week was spotless, everyone was happy, because it was right temperature, working temperature, everyone was happy down there. The new gentleman seems to be working out fine, too.
Oh, that's good. So this'll basically fix them all up there, right?
The original, yeah.
If we split it, and the, we have to get up to next year, it's gonna cost probably more.
Yeah.
Because you can set them up one time.
Yeah.
To me, that's pure maintenance.
Yeah, I think so.
Gentlemen, do we have consensus with this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lean, go ahead and make it happen. Yeah, Lean's file. Lean's file two. Lean's file, uh, this one, um, yeah.
Marking like a sign two.
Yeah, that's Lean, Lean's file two. Okay.
Do you have a consumer pricing next, or do you?
That's just, uh, yeah, that's just work for a budget season, this is an FYI. As you know, today, it came out today, inflation continues to go up, it is not zero percent like it was predicted in last June. It was, was still up there, where it's in the eight percent range. We're gonna have some difficult budget decisions this year, uh, we have to take care of our workforce, and I think it'll be challenging when we get, when we get to a budget season this year. We gotta take care of, again, we have two, two workforce on one side, taxpayers on the other side, and we gotta come to a happy medium. And, uh, again, it's gonna be a challenge this year.
Nothing all the way around.
But Lean, you got that for us, thank you. And Bob usually gets something for us, too, he's moderated also.
Oh, yeah, he's not gonna stop that.
Okay, I wanna.
Keep him busy.
I wanna send it out for, uh, to public comment again.
Yeah, okay, two things, one was, um, that remark you made about the trip hazards, and it was pretty cavalier, because this lady was in her late seventies, lots of people have, wear glasses, can't see that well, and they, some people will use canes, and there's a lot of elderly people in town. You know, maybe those cords have to be white, or orange, or something, I don't know, but, you know, anybody could trip into that.
I was thinking, uh, just an FYI, um, I was thinking orange, and if it's not orange, it's gonna be marked with yellow tape.
Because anybody, you know.
Well, those, that thing is full of roots out there, is what my suggestion is.
Okay, but you said, so they gotta be careful anyways, well, that's a, another hazard all of a sudden here. And like I said, a lot of people wear glasses, especially elderly people who wear glasses that don't even fit their vision, you know? Am I correct there?
You are absolutely correct.
So, you know, and then, like I said, a lot of people use a cane, and this lady does, actually, use a cane, and she's in her late seventies, she fell and hurt herself pretty bad, she didn't wanna report it, she was asked by my wife if she reported, she didn't wanna, cause she didn't wanna seem like she was gonna be down on Christmas, so she kept her mouth shut. So my point is, there's a lot of people that walk through there, and if there's snow on top, nobody's, either they're not gonna walk through there, or if they do, they're gonna be the kids and stuff, but lots of people walk through there, and if it's dusk, you can't see very well. So, you know, just because people want lights out there, who's responsible if I fall and break my legs?
Come.
Exactly, you understand? And this lady could've broke a hip, you know?
You know, those lights, if anything, when you're walking through, they're, they're gonna help you.
Possibly not, because there's shadows, Dave.
You've got roots.
There's shadows, yeah, well, okay, so you just threw another obstacle, is my point.
Right.
Okay, you just threw another obstacle.
I wasn't taking away from your, the obstacle, I was just telling you, there are many obstacles.
Yeah, right, but then you said, you know, the fact that people have to watch out where they're walking, well, it's like I said, people wear glasses, you know? My wife wears glasses, she, her eyesight's not too good.
I wear glasses, too.
She, her eyesight's not too good, so, and, just the point is that, you gotta be careful.
I, I, I hear you, I think, cause I don't think Dave was intentionally trying to be cavalier about it, but I think Leo's point is, uh, you, there are hazards existing, and we're adding it to another additional hazards.
Exactly.
And, uh, it wasn't, I don't, I don't believe Dave in this, or was at all cavalier about that, but, um, at the same time, you know, they're gonna put them up November, I don't wanna see extension cords for a whole month before they turn them on, I think that's ridiculous. So, I, I think one of the stipulations, when we come up to a date next time, is, uh, they put the cords out like the week before, and now they'll keep the minimal, keep the trip and hazards to a minimal.
Well, I did ask that on this, this occasion, I wasn't here on previous years, but this has been, this has been happening for how many years now? Lights on the trees, and.
But, but they've expanded the lights on the trees, too, it's significantly much more than what they've had in the past.
But they'll, they'll run the cords just to test them, and then they'll take the cords off, and then.
And she said, so the twenty-fifth is obviously after Thanksgiving, so she'll do it the weekend before, which potentially would be the eighteen.
And, and then, then the date was, you know, they have it go through, yeah, I'm sorry, but the thing is, uh, I, I thought last year was a reasonable compromise of January fifteenth, and the compromise here is, um, they, they wanted to go through the end of the month. With all due respect, I know your birthday's on the eighteenth, but the thing is, uh, uh, I think we'll make the decision next time, think about it, get some input from, from anyone you wanna talk to, and I think we should come to a conclusion, but I thought the fifteenth worked fine last year.
Yeah.
Is there any reasoning to go longer, or?
Well, the thing is, uh, Christmas season, I hate to say it, you know, is December twenty-fifth, most, I, people take Christmas trees down December twenty-sixth, and that's the end of Christmas, for some people.
If they don't, if they don't take it down the twenty-fifth.
They asked us to go to the end of February, we brought up quite a ways from where they asked us.
Right.
And the reasoning was, they got a lot of feedback on Facebook from the lights being nice, and people liking them, cause it's a gloomy time of year, but Leo brought a lot of good comments last year about, you know, some people don't like them. So, it, we kinda listened to both sides, and came up with a happy year.
Yeah.
Electric rates are going up, December first.
Well, they, they use LEDs, I mean, it's, and we're talking about less than twenty dollars.
No, but it doesn't say so much, when you see all these lights on, it's almost, looks like you don't care about the electric rates.
Amen, amen, and it's been a year, which we're raising taxes, and we're having lights on for a whole month.
Yeah.
It, it just, just, maybe said the wrong thing.
They were raising taxes.
Trust me, we're raising taxes, I just got a, got a feeling. Alright, but we're gonna defer, as I said earlier when they were here, we're gonna make the decision that today, but think about it, and, uh, I think last year was a good date, and the thing is, um, I, that, I ask you just seriously, think about it, I think a reasonable date is, uh, January fifteenth. I know some people like the nineteenth, but sorry.
So what year is that gonna be?
I think the, um, the, they did it through Valentine's Day, to tie into that holiday, and then we kind of, like, sort, and.
August twelfth is my birthday, we couldn't leave it on until then.
We could.
That's my birthday, too.
Alright, enough said of that, I, I'd like to have them here when we discuss it, and we'll give my decision.
I have another one? Yeah, I have another.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, and then, uh, last meeting, I asked you, the board about, um, the policy for the uses of the second floor of the town. Oh. And, uh, so I was thinking about that, and wouldn't it make sense if you had your, um, the template that you have now from the committee? And put that on, on the, on the town website, so people could see and chime in to see, you might get more feedback, and may help you make a decision.
But, I, I, the thing is, I, I think we as elected officials can make the policy.
I understand.
We don't need feedback from a hundred people.
Well, I understand that, but you want, you want input from the community, don't you? You just wanna do what you wanna do?
Well, we're gonna use that, that's where we're elected to make decisions.
Well, I understand that, but usually you like to hear what people wanna say.
Yes, but I'm not gonna solicit a comment, and have someone, uh, have it, it can be dragged on forever.
Yeah.
And I think, the thing is, we got, we got a committee that gave us a draft, I thought the draft for us was a good starting point. We, I think as this, if we can, we have differing opinions on this board, if we, and the thing is, uh, we have different opinions from the town administrator, who gives us an opinion, too. Uh, but we can come to a conclusion, I, I don't think we need to basically route it through.
I think that when we accept it, we'll have a.
Public hearing.
Public hearing or meeting that night on it.
Yeah.
Well, I'm the only guy here, as usual, so you're only gonna get my.
Well, it's posted, it's posted in advance, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the point is, nobody comes, and you know that.
Well, that's.
I'm the only guy here every week.
But last time, somebody posted an unofficial survey, they did it through the community group, and it was.
It was slanted.
It was disaster, it was just, uh, you know, there were negative comments, there were, you know, I think.
I do know that the Town Hall Rest, Restoration Committee, um, you know, they worked on that for a year and a half or so before they came up with that copy, and then Mary and the trustees from the library all were able to put their input in, came to the meetings of it, and that, those were all public meetings, too, but like you say, nobody knew who comes to them.
Right, nobody knows.
But we did have, you know, we did have input from the Town Hall Restoration Committee, and the trustees, and Mary, Gerard from the library.
Who's a, who's a tenant in that building, because we wanna respect the tenant.
No, I understand that.
And, but the thing is, I think we have enough right now, enough, uh, input to make a decision, and the thing is, I see a few modifications, I've, I've reviewed it already, I see a few modifications I wanna add there, but.
And I think, I think it's gonna be something over the first couple of years, Leo, quite honestly.
Well, yeah, it'll be a work in progress.
A living doctor.
We're gonna say, this doesn't work, this does work, you know, let's change it.
Well, yet that, because no matter what you do, you're gonna be changing things.
So I have a feeling we're gonna have several meetings about it. Parking, street parking, not parking, off-site parking, there're gonna be a lot of discussions
Yeah, right.
over that, uh, over that issue.
And then, and then, you know, people gonna, in my opinion, though, uh, there'll be some abuse of that, someone will try to beg and fool, there'll be subs, and we'll go up there, we'll go for pizza drop everywhere.
Yeah, of course, there's gonna be.
And, and we're gonna have to, uh, um, uh, for the first year, monitor the use and adjust accordingly. But the thing is, um, at this point, I agree with Dave, we've got a lot of public input already indirectly from, from the people who are instrumental in making this happen. In, in attendance, so.
Can I ask a question on that level?
Sure.
You guys said that, you said there's no kitchen up there?
No kitchen up there.
So, how are you gonna get water up there, is the bathroom gonna have like a utility sink or anything for cleaning or?
We're gonna let the cleaning person worry about that, they clean that whole building there now, they go in the bathroom, get water, whatever.
Well, I know that we struggle to get water out of our little faucet, we have to use a, a cut plastic bottle to get underneath the faucet. So I don't know that, I, I'm not sure if anyone's thought about how the access for water for cleaning is going to.
Like a utility sink, you mean?
Yeah, a utility sink or something that accesses on the, on the, underneath the sink for a bucket to be rolled up.
Those are all handicapped, so you can't do that on the new ones. There are two bubblers for water.
Yeah.
Um, bringing that up, we'll have to, we'll end up having to test that.
Yeah, but that's, but that's something that's, um, we may have to, uh, after.
Put a bucket on wheels and take it up the elevator to go upstairs?
That could be.
I mean, that's kind of.
Well, there's a bathroom upstairs too.
Yeah, well, you just said it was handicapped, you can't use the sink.
Well, you say you can't attach a bucket or anything to the bottom of it.
Yeah.
You put little holes on it like they do what they do here.
Well, what they do, we have to, that's something we have to get.
They'll have to siphon out of the toilet.
I mean, it took us many, many years to get hot water, so there's just those little things that, if somebody's gonna have to clean it, they're gonna need the right tools to do the cleaning.
Yeah, yeah, it's a big room too, you have to clean it.
It is.
But that's why, that's one, one of my recommendations that we already talked about, uh, uh, for example, there was no concept of a user fee. I'm sorry, but the thing is, in order to maintain that building, we're gonna require a user fee for non-town, Dunbar-related activities which are non-governmental.
That's my opinion also.
Well, only because I wanna maintain that pristine condition, a good condition.
It definitely is.
You know, like the garden club and all them.
Everybody that's not town, uh.
Government.
Government should pay. Otherwise, I could have a card game up there every Friday afternoon and leave.
Part of the Dunbar and poker group.
Well, you know what I'm saying? Really, it's open to anybody.
All right, all right, but Leo, to answer your question, I'll, 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 the thing is, um, we got a lot of input, I think is, uh, I think Dave hit on the head and I agree with him. It's gonna be a living document, the first year, because there's gonna be kinks and we have to work it out, and uh, but at this point, I don't wanna overly complicate it, because we do have some, they gave us a template to work off. And I think it's a great template.
And twenty-some people worked on that template, so.
All right.
You need to take, uh.
I'll bring it back from, to, to the board, and the thing is, I'm gonna let the board comment on a few things a bit before we go into non-public.
I don't have anything from the board.
Okay, I have one item I just wanna put in the, I was talking with Justin, anything for the board?
Uh, yeah, I did, uh, well, I did an inspection at the uh, police and fire station, um, from the Department of Labor. Based on the Department of Labor inspection, how they said we had a leak in the wall, um, so I wanted to investigate that a little more, um. So I went over there, I think it was last week or the week prior, um, I investigated that a little more, I kinda did some digging. I, I don't believe it's a leak in the wall, um, what I've kinda realized is, it's more runoff from the back, back roof part of the building. The ground slopes around the back of the building, and it seems to appear that the water's draining in the back garage door, um, oh, behind the police. Police, um, station and where the fire department comes in with their utility truck. Um, there is a section, um, under the garage door that the.
Rubber?
Yeah, the rubber, the rubber's missing, um, so I believe that the water's draining down in, in a heavy rainfall. Um, after the pavement was top coated, there's pretty minimal pitch, I put a level down there, and it's probably a half inch over four feet. Um, to get away from that door, so I think in a, in a heavy rainstorm, it's just backfeeding in through that door, under that, um, rubber strip. So, uh, my plan of attack is just to contact a couple garage door companies, get a few quotes to get a strip that's just a complete full length. Kinda get it, replace that strip so that the water doesn't penetrate under there anymore, and then, uh, reach out to a few gutter companies. To at least just get a gutter on the, across the back of the building, um, or at least get quotes for now, um, decide a plan of attack from there. Um, to just divert the water out away from the building, um, the idea would be to bring the downspoke down and push it away about six or eight feet. Just out where the stairs come out, um, on the police section and just get it out.
What was the, uh, she, I can't wet down in the garage?
No, it, it penetrates in through that garage door and it leaks in and it gets all wet down by their lockers. Um, so it's, so it's all water stained under there.
Yeah, even the rubber strip is not gonna be a hundred percent.
No, so it's not really a, it's a, not a hundred percent fix, it's just a kind of a, an extra incentive, you know, to kinda help again with. You know, water and, you know, rodents as well.
Yeah, I, I think the gutters will probably keep a lot of it from coming in.
Yeah, because it, it grades all that way, you see over time, it's all been dug out over time, it's, you know, it's stripped there over the years, it's all, you know, kinda drained.
Um, I, I wanna talk about gutters for a minute too.
Yeah.
I get a quote on that, but when the gentleman's here for gutters, I wanna look at this building too, because remember we have, uh, we, if we have straight gutters going across in the front of the building and the back of the building. May stop this, the splashback on the painting, we may have, not have the painter to get it for years, maybe we can get eight years out of it.
Probably something for next year.
Yeah.
Well, I'm meeting with the person tomorrow, so I can see if they can.
Well, if it can. Swing by here, fucking, lean, lean, can you, uh, can you direct that?
Seamless gutters, Justin?
Yeah.
You know, they make them, make them on the, on a truck and they just, to the length and let it go.
I have one company I'm starting with tomorrow and.
Check with the warranty on them too.
Yeah, I'll get them, uh, yeah, starting with one company now, get a few different quotes.
What goes wrong with this?
Justin, did you, um, think that, um, asphalt berm in front of that door is still a possibility, or is because the door height or the truck height is too?
I, in, Lean had mentioned a, uh, asphalt berm, um, because I, I was gonna talk to Jeff about that, and my only concern is again that, you know, we are. Pretty maxed out on height there with the utility truck going in, I didn't investigate that, I am gonna be there tomorrow, so I do wanna look at the truck height.
Yeah.
That, that would be a quick fix too.
Yeah.
It is, but again, my concern is the truck is maxed out on height there, so if we create a berm and it goes up even two, three inches, is it gonna hit the, hit the ceiling?
What kind of trucks get back there?
The utility truck, the fire truck and the boat and everything.
And the boat are stored back there.
So.
Let's know.
So, um, that's my little project I'm working on.
Love the forest tree truck that I was back to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, I didn't measure height, but I'm, it's pretty maxed out in there.
Any others?
Well.
That's it, continue as a word, brother, stay up.
I, um, I went this week to the Coffee with a Cop. Martinelli and Roldan Selectmen were there and several other people from town were there, it was a, it was a well-received, uh. Um, meeting of people from town there, there to support the police department and whatnot, and go and meet the police officers, we're all there and. Um, I just thought it was a good, it was a good event to go to, I, it's the first one I had had time to go to and, uh, I think it went well.
Very good, thank you, David.
That's it.
All right, I just got one announcement, I think as I made sure distribution was made, but as you're well aware now through my email, uh, from the, from the building department. The planning board has pending legal action in court regarding a recent decision, copies of the, uh, where, the copies of the, uh. Lawsuit has been distributed to the Suckman and Planning Board, Donna White's currently working with the town attorney and collecting the required information. I anticipate the town attorney might be meeting with the planning board to obtain the nuances of the case.
I did deliver, hand-deliver that packet, certified document to the attorney yesterday.
Okay, so Donna's pretty much okay.
She's gotten that.
If you would just remind her, uh, that they, uh, I highly recommend that the, whichever lead attorney's gonna be, that the attorney's gonna be in court. Should meet with the, uh, non-public, with the planning board to, uh, obtain the nuances of the court case.
Okay.
And there are certain, uh, doc, certain items in there, and I thought in the lawsuit which were, um, erroneous. And they, uh, so erroneous that the facts were corrected in these meetings. And they totally disregarded the facts when presented the facts and just reiterated the lies, I'm gonna say it, lies. Uh, and, and put it in a legal document, and these, I just thought was four errors. And so I'm, I, I think the lawyer should at least hear the planning board's point of view on that, and I'll leave it at that. Okay, gentlemen, I'd like to go into non-public, paragrafe ninety-one dash alpha, subpar paragraph.
Do you have anything else?
No, he's done.
You're done, okay.
Subparagraph, you're interrupting me, Dave, I don't like that.
Sorry.